Welcome to the Board of Education Budget Committee Meeting. It is Wednesday, March 24th, 2021. It is 6 o'clock. Ray Guarino is not present tonight, so I am going to try my best at running this meeting. Heather's here, but she's not feeling super well, so I will do my best to do us proud. Let's start off with the roll call. I'm here. Ms. Bishop's here. Ms. Gilio?
Here.
Ms. Raymond? We'll circle back to her. She's having some connectivity issues. Ms. Odin?
Here.
Ms. Brown?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Present.
Mr. Guarino's not here. Ms. Seem?
Here.
Ms. Timmons?
Here.
And Heather will click back on. I'll let you all know when she's here. Also present, we have Mr. Parker, Dr. McKinney, Dr. Andre and Mr. Donovan, and Ms. Kinsella as our backbone. Okay, Heather clicked off and will come back on. So tonight's meeting is to discuss the budgets that have been presented to us over the last several weeks. We're slated to discuss them. I was hoping Mr. Donovan could maybe give us a quick synopsis of what we've looked at and what we're hoping to do.
Certainly. First, I will start with the handout you received this week in your packet. The first two items, item 2A and 2B. The 2A is the list of all the teachers at the schools and the type of teacher. That was previous in your packet. We didn't change the total number of teachers, but we found there were a couple that were mixed up. For example, ELL teachers on this one is correct. It's 32.6. The other one, I think, had 29. So it was in a different category. So this is the more accurate one. So if you want to throw out your first one, feel free. Secondly, is the para position. That was the one sheet in Section 2 that we had yet to give you. And that lists all the paras. That does, this year, we did not add any paras for the first time in a very long time. So this was the same amount of paras, for the most part, that we, well, actually, that we ended up the year with. So that's what that is. Then, in Section 11, you received the number of sheets in Section 11. The first one you've probably seen before, that is the October 1 enrollment. And as you're probably all aware, the state requires, once a year in October, to send an enrollment up. That's what they use at the state level for a number of calculations and information gathering. If you recall, when we did it this year, we were 860 students less than we were the previous October. So October of 2020, when we compiled the data, it showed 860 fewer students than October of 2019. That's highly irregular. We've never seen such a decrease. So we then decided to take a look at, try to explain what some of those differences are. And I'll go over that in a minute. Just to let you know that 11B, what 11B is, is the private school enrollment. So these are all the students that live in Nashua that go to some sort of a private school, whether it be Bishop Gerton, or St. Christopher, or World Academy, or the charter schools like Academy for Science and Design, and Micro Academy. So you can see, by school and by grade, how many of our students are attending these other schools. To be honest with you, we sort of expected this delta to be bigger than it is. But numbers don't lie. So we'll skip 11C for now and look at 11D. This is the analysis that we pulled together when we started looking and said, "How could we possibly have 860 fewer students?" We certainly didn't have that big a difference between the junior and senior class. So some of them were pretty straightforward to us. The last year's October number had 35 students in our Purple Panther preschool. When in October, we did not, we were not running our Purple Panther preschool, so therefore, there was zero there this year. So that's pretty straightforward, explaining in the world of COVID, we were not running the preschool in October. There's also another program called Play Pals. So what Play Pals is, is we have preschool programs for our special ed students. We do not have preschool programs for non-special ed students. But what we do have is we mix in some more typical students with special education students. That's called Play Pals. They pay for this. So it's not that we just decide randomly to throw some typical students in. They meet, they come in, there's deadlines, and they pay so much, so much a month to go to this program. So that program was not started this year in October, so that's 118 less than we had last year. Last year, we had 118 students in that program. Homeschool enrollment, that increased by 116, which was an area that we figured would be part of the delta of the 860. We thought it might be a little bit higher, but it's 116. So more parents decided to homeschool instead of to send their students back to school during COVID. Kindergarten, that was another one. Kindergarten's 180 less than last year. I can almost guarantee you, we hardly ever see, or ever see, a difference of 180 from grade 2 to grade 3, or something like that. That would be highly irregular. So what this is probably telling us is since kindergarten is not mandatory in New Hampshire, many parents decided, "I'm not going to send my kid to kindergarten. I'm going to give them another year." So that's probably what happened. We will know next year when we do this again. Then we said, "Okay, what has been the average annual decrease?" So we took the last five years, said, "What's the average over that?" Some years have been as low as 35, some have been as high as maybe 210 or so. But the average over the last five or six years was, five years actually, was 113. So we said, "Okay, assuming an average decrease, that would explain that." And then the private school number, as you know, many of the private schools, not all of them, but many of them sent students back sooner than we did. But the actual number that switched to private schools this year was only 52 higher than it was last year. So that gives us a delta trying to find 860. We found about 614. So we honestly don't know where the rest of those students are. Some people have ideas, but there's really no sort of numbers to back it up. So and I think it's an important point. When we were doing the budget this year and the budget we've presented to you, due to the fact that we had such a significant difference from one year to the next that we've never seen before, and that it was very difficult to try to define what those were, we pretty much just assumed, we made the assumption in the budget that we would sort of move all the positions forward next year. We did not reduce, I think, one position we reduced. So we figured we'd roll forward. Now, obviously, if we find out October 1st of 2021 that this number is much lower, then I think the district needs to look long and hard to say, "Okay, can we continue to keep the same level of staffing if we're in fact going to be 1,000 students lower than we were two years ago?" But we just don't know the answer to that. And my sense is that 860 difference is going to decrease significantly when we do this, do this analysis next October. And, you know, we'll even start to see it sooner than October, probably in September. So that is that. I'll just finish up the rest of these items and then certainly feel free to ask questions. 11C, this is the report that I believe Mrs. Odin and Mrs. Seem were talking about at the last meeting. This is where we take, we list all the schools, we list the enrollment. As you can see, this one is as of 3/18/2021. So this is K through 5. And then we sort of project that into the next year. And all we really do when we project it is we sort of slide it down and over one. So we assume the current number of first graders, which right now was 677, that we'll have 677 second graders the following year. And we sort of slide those across. We do have to come up with some sort of an estimate for kindergarten because there's no group sliding over. And then what we do is we list the total number of teachers currently in the budget at each one of these schools, at each grade, and then divide it by the number of students per school. And then you can see, in that third column of each box, you can see the average number of students in each grade at each school. Now, some of the members that have been on the board for a long time can recall that sometimes you'd see these numbers back in the day, 27, 28, things like that. Those numbers don't exist anymore. If you look at these numbers, most of the numbers are below 20. So class size, now keep in mind, this is based on the lower number, the 860 lower number, for the most part. So we are expecting these numbers to climb next year somewhat. So it is kind of a tricky year this year, looking at this data compared to most other years. Okay. Then 11E. 11E is the enrollment projections that are put together by the Nashua Regional Planning Commission. Typically, each year, we would do, we would have, we used to have NEXAC do this report. This group does it too, and it was about half the price of NEXAC. So a few years ago, we switched to this group. I did not have a new one done this year because of the 860, because of COVID, because of all the things. I didn't feel it was probably worth the $2,200 a cost to get this done. So this is simply a copy of last year's. Now, keep in mind, it's a multiple-year look at things. So it's still fairly valuable. Honestly, when you look at, if you do one of these each year, you don't notice that big a difference from one year to the next. So I really, I think, you know, waiting, waiting one more year to get more accurate data will probably make sense. And then the last item that we passed out was 12A. That is, it's titled Summary by Commodity Code, or you could call it Summary by Account. This lists what we budgeted last year for each one of these accounts, what we budgeted in the fiscal year '22 budget, the difference. And most of these items were described during the budget presentation. If you want to go back and look at the budget presentation, it probably answered the significant ones. If there's a few that weren't answered and you'd like to ask some questions on those, then obviously, feel free to do that. So that is my little blurb for now. Are there any questions on what I just mentioned?
Go ahead, Ms. Johnson.
Thank you. I read the City of Nashua's school enrollment projections. Those are just projections. I mean, they projected at past times, we'd have more kids than we do. Given the fact that there's no inventory, people aren't selling, people aren't buying as much because there's no inventory. What concerns me here, on the 860 less kids, and what we sent to the state, I believe, and then the total that you show is 614, that's a difference of 246 kids. That's a lot of kids. And those are kids that the state, 860, the state is taking away some funding on. Am I correct? That the mayor's squawking about, and the mayor's saying, "We've got to find the money." But you know what? If you don't have the kids, you don't have the money. It's just that simple. We don't know how many returning. We don't know if we're going to lose any more kids next year with the parents. So I'm really concerned, you know, numbers are numbers. You can't, you can't fudge numbers, but you know, numbers are numbers. So with that 860 less kids, what is the amount that the state is taking away from us in funding?
It's, I think it's about, I don't have that in front of me. It is, I think it's $2 million.
$2 million. And the mayor says, "We have to make it up." Well, you know, getting rid of your performing arts, and there's some money to make up for the kids if he's so concerned. So there's no way we can make up, you know, really $2 million more in the budget because, I mean, this is going to be a very tight year for people in the city. I'm hearing from people all over the place. But the people, believe me, are not fuming with the taxes. Schools aren't opening. Kids aren't in school and paying high taxes. I've got a list of questions, so when we, just let me know when you want me to start all my lists of questions for the budget. And then I'm going to probably make a motion on the bottom line of the budget. Thank you.
Are there any other, there are no other presentations, right?
Not tonight, no.
No, okay. Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. I-
Oh, by the way, Ms. Raymond showed up at 6:03.
I didn't show, I was there here and-
No, I know. I said you had computer issues.
It's been, it's been a challenging month for me. So, and for many people, I'm sure. So looking at 11D, and as Mrs. Johnson said, we've lost 246 kids that aren't accounted for. I guess my question is, do we, what's our, and this is probably a question for Dr. McKinney and the Assistant Superintendent. What's our responsibility for following up on those students? I know that the compulsory education law, I think it's, I don't remember. I think it's RSA 183 or 193, probably 193, says that kids have to go to school until they are 18. But it also doesn't have any teeth. So I guess my question is, have we made like 246 reports to DCYF? I don't think they would be thankful if we did that. But what's our responsibility towards making sure that those students are somewhere?
Go ahead, Ms. McKinney, Dr. McKinney.
Yeah, I didn't come with logs of the 250 contacts, but we've done just about everything we can. Typically, when students leave the district, they enroll in another district or school. They request records from us. Given COVID, a lot of those things are in kind of pause. So the state is giving guidance if people are in transition. We have students remoting into our classes that are both in the country, out of state, even in other countries. So our goal, once we come to a consensus around the fall, is reaching back out, re-engaging families, having them return to school. You know, many parents have said, "I have made a registration in a private school, but I would gladly return to Nashua, you know, should the circumstances change." So this is kind of a fluid piece that's going to run probably from now until June. But we'll make every effort to reach out to families and get them back to Nashua if we can.
So I guess the question is, do we think that those are students who have left the district? Or we just simply don't know and we've exhausted our options for finding them? But just coming from DCYF, I just, my, my heart kind of skips a beat when I see that we don't know where 246 kids are.
Looks like Ms. Kinsella has an answer.
I know during the, the beginning of the year, enrollment search or the piece that Felicia Nero does for us, every city's child from last year kind of has a marker, if you will. Those children are looked for. So for instance, if Bobby Smith was with us last year, and Bobby Smith is not with us this year, we check other cities. And if they're reporting Bobby Smith, then that, then that kind of minuses that out. So the state does that piece. And that's why the enrollments take close to a month for verification. That's the verifying piece that the state does. So it could be, we considered running a withdrawal report. Unfortunately, there is not a lot of consistency in the reasons that we have. So we can't really tell what is normal for us and what was not normal, what could have been COVID moving. So it was hard to differentiate. So those could be legitimate withdrawals and, you know, children that are safe and in the right place. But there was no way to differentiate for us, so we didn't run that report for you guys.
So that 246 then encapsulates students who would have moved to other districts as well?
It absolutely could, yes.
All right, thank you. I appreciate the clarity. I just, my heart broke for a second. Thank you.
Ms. Seem?
Can I, can I tag on that? If, on the funding end of it, do they, do they determine this year's funding based on last year's attendance? And then if we end up with that many more, then do they give us that money? Or do they wait until the next year and we just lost that money for the year, this current year? Did I confuse you with that? In other words, when they're determining how much money we're going to get for how many kids, do they base it on what we had last year? Or do they wait until this year and give it to us based on what we actually end up with this year?
Typically, the funding for next school year will be based upon this October 1st, this past October 1st. Thus, the big drop, not only in, in the number of students, but also in the number of free and reduced. And we've talked about that because the federal government said, "Here's free food. Those families don't have to fill the forms out. They're not filling the forms out because they don't have to." So therefore, we're losing another 2.5 million there. So that's what they're doing. Now, there has been discussion because it's not only Nashua where this is happening. This is happening all over the state. So there has been some legislation discussed to say, "Can we use the previous year's numbers? Or can we use something different?" I, to be honest with you, I don't know exactly where that legislation stands at this point in time. But a lot of people have brought it up and it is being discussed at the, up in Concord.
So is it, is it fair to say, and is it fair to say that based on the fact that there is so much unknown going into this year that it's going to be pray up and make mistakes? Because you're, 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 you can't plan on something that's an unknown. And obviously, we have too many unknowns in this case. So even formulating a budget is somewhat risky because, because you don't have, you don't have solid data. And maybe, am I wrong in that assessment, Mr. Donovan?
No, I think that's kind of the mindset when we're putting this together, to say, typically, we'll know what to expect in the next year. This year was a year like no other. So it was difficult to see what will happen next year. And my personal opinion, it's just my opinion, we showed you some of those numbers. Some of those numbers, students will be coming back. Some of them, we don't know, but it's a bit risky to make reductions to your budget. And then all of a sudden, those kids do come back, then where are you? So-
And you can't, you can't reduce staff because if they do come back, then you're caught short. And you go to the same problem we were having back in the pandemic. You know, not being sure that we're going to be able to man the classes. That wouldn't be, that wouldn't, so I did not get the 11C, the chart that I was interested in seeing. Did everybody else get that? And it's just me that didn't get it? I thought Mrs. Odin told me she didn't see it. So can I just email me one, please? I went through all of mine. It's probably me, I don't doubt for a minute. But-
Yep, we can, we can send you one. We'll send you in an email, you wanted as an attachment?
Yeah, because it's not that much, right?
No, it's just, it's one page.
Yeah. And so, Mr. Donovan, based on, obviously, in the past, that was a huge concern because, as you noted, there were classes that we had that sometimes had 27, even, I think even 29. And sometimes that was even not counting the kids that come in and out, the music, that they just come for music, or they just come for physical education, or they just come for whatever happens to be the case. And so those kids weren't even counted in that total. So you're telling me now, though, that our statistics, again, going back to this unknown thing, but tentatively, our statistics are, they're not accurate. That's basically the bottom line. They can't be accurate because, in my view, how can we, we can't possibly, I think it's just that some of those kids, you know, some of those kids didn't show up for record taking and so, but I don't think all those, and as Mrs. Johnson pointed out, the, we haven't sold that much real estate because we didn't have the inventory to sell. So it can't be that that many people are just disappearing into another city. I don't think so. Okay, I guess I'm confusing myself now. Thank you, I appreciate, I appreciate your help.
Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. I'm going to go back on some of Mrs. Seem's. I think a lot of it also might depend on whether or not we're opening up schools full-time next year. We're going to still be on this hybrid thing, two half-day classes. Now, I was told that Massachusetts, from grade 1 to 8, is going to be opening up full-time, I guess after vacation. You know, parents want to see their kids back in school. We see the emails that are coming in. I'm sure everybody got the email from the parent whose child just started elementary school and the big smile on the child's face, being back in school. I mean, my heart just broke for that child. And everybody's heart should be breaking for that child because the child's back in school and the fact that there are other kids that are not back in school. So if you're asking me, "Am I going to save every position here?", my answer's going to be, "No, I'm going to make motions left and right on here." Because I cannot justify a budget of so much staff. And I haven't even gotten, because, Mr. Donovan, I asked Mr. Smith back on March 3rd regarding vehicles. And I sent an email to you and I wanted all the records on it, a mileage and everything. You're asking us to spend money, taxpayers' dollars, that parents have had to stay home, and if I'm boring anybody, I'm sorry, for parents have to stay home, teach their kids this year, and become teachers. And they're not teachers. And the only staff that we saw from the beginning to end, working full-time, full-time, was our custodians. Everybody else has been like on the 2.5A hybrid or remote, and they weren't even full-time. So I have a hard time with this budget of funding everything the way it is. To lose $2 million, it's because we lost students. And we don't know if those students are coming back. It's an iffy thing. But I'll tell you something, if I was a parent and my kids weren't back in school full-time, my kids would not be going back to school. Because we don't even know how much time with education, they have really fallen behind. And you can't tell me that every child here can fall behind just six months. I'm waiting to see on these assessments. And that's going to cost us more money for the assessments. And we need to find out how far behind they fell. Because if not, we're introducing new programs, moving them forward, and some of these students probably aren't even ready to go forward. And the high school students, well, the seniors, if they fell behind, they don't have that second chance. They're done, they're graduating this year. So I have a real tough time with this budget and the increases here. And we lost $2 million. Well, you know what? We're just going to have to live with that and figure out where in the budget we're going to have to reduce by $2 million. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I do want to point out, as a, as a parent who's been watching as remotely as I can, my kids doing school. I think that, I think the teachers would feel that they have been working full-time five days a week plus. I don't think anybody's working two and a half days. I think it probably feels like kids are in front of the computer for a lot less time than we would expect them to. But I think what we're hearing and what we're seeing are two very different things. I think our, our teachers are working above and beyond what has ever been expected of them before. But keeping in mind, we do still have a budget to shore up. So I hope the teachers know that the majority of us do see all of the work that they're doing and respect it. And I don't mean anything against what you're saying, Ms. Johnson. I just think it needs to be pointed out that, that there are different opinions on how hard teachers are working. Go ahead.
So the question that I would have now is, this two million dollars. Is it, is it Dr. McKinney's opinion? Is it Dan Donovan's opinion? Is it, what is the direction? Are, are we saying that, that we need to leave these, we need to leave the staff in place? Because we don't know about these unknown figures? And if we don't, it's going to be chaos? I, I, I definitely want to hear from, from educators. And no offense to Mrs. Johnson, I, I hear what she's saying. But I, I, I would like to have a recommendation. And I, I guess I would, I would like to hear from any of our administrators who have any advice or anything they want to say on this, on this circumstance. Thank you.
Could I just speak to the two million piece first? The two million is not in this specific budget. This is the operating budget. The two million is part of the revenue budget. Okay, and as many people have said over the years, oh, that's money that goes to the city. In a sense, that's what it is. So that's, so the city's total coffers for education revenue is going to be two million less. It's really not this specific budget. So I just want to make that clear before Dr. McKinney speaks.
Mr. Donovan, though, does that not mean that the mayor is likely to take that out of our budget? On that, or is that your opinion that he won't?
He will. My, my understanding, he will not take that out of our budget. He has, he has given us a guideline of one point five percent increase.
And did he do that knowing that we might, that, that we had this unknown statistic?
Yes, he did.
He did. Thank you so much. That, that, that helps me.
Ms. Oden had requested.
Okay, thank you. I just want to say, as a former teacher here in Nashua, I talk to a lot of teachers and I haven't had one tell me that they're not working harder than they've ever worked before. I know people think two and a half days, but they're, they're meeting with students individually, in groups. You know, we talk about SEL, they're trying to make those connections for those students. So I, I, I understand what people are thinking and how they're thinking that. But that's not the, that's not reality for our teachers. I will say, I do not want to reduce in any way, shape or form the number of our staff. We have students that have had a traumatic year. There's lots of learning gaps for most students. They need to catch up and we need to ensure that we have the smallest classes possible to give those students as much individualized attention as possible. I, the only thing I would say, if there's extra money anywhere, that it would behoove us to look at adding more psychologists. We have a need for psychologists. We've had a need for a few years now for more psychologists. And with the pandemic and what has happened to students, I'm hearing from parents, I'm hearing from grandparents, that we are having students go into therapy. And the parents are paying for it or their insurance is. So I, I'm not looking to cut staff in any way, shape or form. But I think if we can add some more psychologists, it will be very helpful to our students and our families and all of our educators. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oden. I am not seeing any, oh, I knew if I said it there to be a hand. Ms. Brown, go ahead.
Thank you. So actually, I would like to second what Ms. Oden said. I agree. I think right now, we've got both learning gaps. And I think more importantly, the social, the emotional needs, not even necessarily social needs, emotional needs of children are really need, we need to be paying attention to that in a way we never have before. And I think that we will need to keep on the number of teachers we have now. So that we can keep those class sizes small and also so that they can pay, give more individualized attention to all the students. That said, I think that that has to do with this budget that we're working on now. So I'm not, where I'm not interested in reduction of course. I am skeptical that our numbers will climb back to the eight hundred and sixty students that we lost. I think just, and this is completely anecdote, anecdotal evidence, just in my sphere of influence in my neighborhood, within a six-block radius of me, I know of two families who have moved to different towns because we haven't offered school this year permanently. They sold their homes and moved out of town. I know of a family that modified their custody agreement and moved their children to Massachusetts. And I asked, do you think you'll be back next year? And they said, we might reconsider, they're in middle and elementary school. And they said, maybe we'll reconsider in high school, but at this point, we're pretty happy where we are. We might reconsider it. And I know of several other families that are paying out of district costs for their children to go to other school districts. And I think that there is, are still people that are marketing their homes to move on from Nashua. It's sad, but I think it's a reality that we're going to have to face. So whereas, I actually think that the district administration has done a fantastic job preparing this budget. You've been, I've, I've watched each of the different departments come out and they've been really pretty lean, minimal increases, only the bare necessities. We, I recognize, I know we put on the list for a few more BCBAs, which I think is going to be really important. But I think there's going to be some real consideration for our budget in twenty-two, twenty-three, three, right, twenty-one, twenty-two, yeah, the next year. I think we have to be realistic that this is probably not going to be a one-time, one-year fix. So we just need to be paying attention to that kind of thing on the horizon. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Ms. Johnson?
I hear what everybody says, but it's our fault really that these kids are in this position that they're in. We didn't open up the school. Mr. Donovan, I want to get, I asked you for information and also Mr. Smith back on three twenty-one regarding one ton truck, dump truck, six-wheeler, commercial dump, box van, cargo van, sedan for supervisor, the V-Box sander, which is fifteen thousand dollars. How much are the vehicles, the, each vehicle that you want to get?
Okay, these, these vehicles are through the SURF funding. They're not in the operating budget. And I can, Sean has, I, I believe we're going to get those answers at the next finance and ops meeting. We went out and got quotes and did that. So I think, like I said, it's not this budget, that's the SURF budget. And we will bring that forward at a finance and ops with all the info.
Okay, so let me ask a question. That money's coming through the city itself, through the funding of SURF?
Yes.
Okay, so, so why was it put in our budget then? That he needs this, if it's going, if it's not even going through us?
Well, it's not, it's not in this, it's not in the operating budget.
Okay. We really didn't even need to see it, but, because I want to see the information on that. Also, let me see what else I put here. Page eleven on the plant operations. We've got major repairs that we've got numbers on. Remove underground oil tank, thirty thousand. That's in the budget. So are we going to get bids on all of these or do we just know the prices of them offhand?
Yeah, what Mr. Smith does is he estimates the cost to do that work. It's something that he'll, he'll want to do, so he'll put in an estimate. And then, yes, as we move forward, assuming we do that project next year, we will certainly bring it to finance and ops. We'll bring the bids forward.
Grounds equipment was twenty-one thousand dollars. I kind of looked through this quickly today. Total of six thousand in budget. He wanted twenty-one, but he only put six thousand in the budget. Yeah. Secondary, my request for grounds equipment was twenty-one, a total of six thousand in the administrative budget. Need to replace a sander for one of the huge plow trucks. Okay, that's a fifteen-dollar one, fifteen thousand dollars. And I had asked, have we gone to Public Works to see if they had a spare sander versus buying one that we could get from them? Because they're replacing the equipment.
Yes, so the fifteen thousand was not put in our budget, the operating budget. So if Sean wants to, that, the first step he can take is reach out to Public Works and see if they have one. But he'll have to find another funding source for that because it's not in the budget.
Okay, now I want to go over to IT. So how many Chromebooks haven't we gotten in yet?
Well, we've, the thirty-five hundred that we've been waiting for, I believe we just heard last week that they will be coming in within the next month.
So we won't get them till April?
Yes.
And that was for seven hundred and something thousand dollars? Is that the one?
Exactly.
Okay, so with that question with the budget. So the ones that we're waiting for, the thirty-five hundred, were students? Refresh my memory. Were they without Chromebooks for the, this whole time?
No, these are, these, this thirty-five hundred is, now, the, the thirty-five hundred's being purchased with, with the federal funds, the CARES Act funds, not with the operating budget. And these are to replace the Chromebooks that are going, they're going to be, be past their useful life. So we have this, as of this September, I believe, and then the following September, we're going to be having, I believe, over five thousand Chromebooks that will no longer be as useful as they once were due to the software changes. So this thirty-five hundred is the beginning to replace those.
The beginning to replace the Chromebooks that are no good. And also, in the budget, we have maintenance, summer help in the budget to fix broken Chromebooks. And to, summer work will consist of enrolling five thousand-plus Chromebooks, restocking cars, repairing damaged Chromebooks. Okay, so is the cost of repairing the damaged Chromebooks in, where on the budget?
The, the, there's, there's, we already have purchased through the CARES Act parts. So they have the parts. So the cost to fix them is they're going to use the summer help to fix them.
Okay, so we're taking as much money as we can from the CARE Act to replace and fix things. Is that it?
Exactly.
Exactly, exactly. So I guess my question is, that twelve point nine million dollars.
Yes.
Have Mr. Smith let the cat out of the bag? I'm going to keep coming back to what exactly is with the twelve point nine million dollars cover?
We will, we will have a special session on the twelve point nine million. We were just, we just had our first review of those funds with the state yesterday. We're having another one next week. So we're learning as you're asking. But I spoke with Dr. McKinney. I believe it probably makes sense to have a session with the board so we can talk about this twelve point nine million and we can let you know what it can be used for. It is in the form of a grant. With any grant, it's a federal grant. You need to follow the federal regulations. And you need to get approval for the item before you purchase it. So I spoke with Mr. Smith today with the amount of twelve point nine million. You know, we could buy PPE for every district in the state. So we, we have to use it smartly. And that's what we'll be working with, with administration and with plant operations to use this in the most effective way we can for the district.
Okay, so we should be able to get a list from you as to what they will allow us to use it for, right?
Yes, we'll try to give you a summary of that, yes.
And I am, because some of this, what it used to be for, we might be able to remove some money from the budget if it's duplicate.
Yes, we tried to keep that in mind when we were building the budget. No, even, even though we didn't truly know what we could use the twelve point nine million for.
So what I'm saying is that if we get twelve point nine million, we get the list of what we can use it for. But that same amount of money, it's in a line item from, in the budget. And we can reduce that line item or eliminate it if we have the twelve point nine million dollars that's coming from the federal government through the state as a grant.
The, the reality of those funds, like I said, we don't have, I, I, I can't answer that question yet till I know more. But that, the reality is, most of those funds are going to be used for things that probably aren't in this budget. We can't use it to pay for history teachers at the high school. We can't use it for sort of standard operating things. That's not what the money is for.
A lot of money.
It is a lot of money.
And there's a lot of money in the budget. And I'm sure, I'll go through with, with, because I won't vote on this budget right now. Because I think there, I haven't had a chance to really go through this budget for reductions. But I'm sure that there's areas that can be reduced in this budget. And if I made a motion, I know the board don't agree with me. I'm not trying to be mean. I'm not trying to be nasty. I'm trying to look at every possible part here. I know we have students that's fallen behind. I know there's a lot of students with emotional problems. But that was caused because we didn't open up the district. So I guess that falls on us. Because the district was closed down for so long. Well, other school districts in the state and across the country have opened. I guess it was shame on us, parents and students. Teachers wanted to go back in. And I'm not trying to minimize what the teachers are doing. I'm just saying that, you know, two and a half hours, half a day of school isn't a lot when children need to be in there longer for their learning. And the fact that you look at this budget, and again, it's a big hefty budget here. Don't know how many kids are coming back, but I, I can't support this budget. I really can't. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I also want to remind us that we do have the public input session next week, which may help us understand better what the community would like to see with the budget, not just what we're seeing here. So just keep that in mind. Ms. Raymond?
Thank you. I have two kind of questions, requests. And you, you nailed the first one. I'd like to ask that we refrain from making motions until after we have the public hearing next week. I just feel like we ought to hear what the community has to say before we make motions or make changes. And then the other request I have is that we keep our discussions about the hybrid plan, the return to school plan, to times when that is actually on the agenda. I just feel like we're talking about today enrollment and, and whatnot. And it's tangential, but it doesn't move us forward in understanding the numbers that are in front of us. So I'd like to just kind of stay a little bit more focused. So, thank you.
I, I have a quick question, just kind of looking over where the, you know, the biggest increases are, obviously. Are we anticipating, I mean, this, this has been a rough year for teachers and staff. And probably, I think if given the opportunity and the resources, you know, we may see teachers leaving. Are we looking at a reduction in not us cutting positions, but positions opening up where we would maybe able to save funding there?
Like anticipated leaving? Does that make sense?
Okay. Can I? And I, can I just say on that, I think you have a valid point, Jen, because what, 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 what I think you're saying is that our tenured teachers. Are the ones who are certainly in a position where they, most of them are in a position where they could retire if they chose to. And in circumstances, you certainly couldn't blame them because a lot of them have high risk factors. And when you have the tenured, you know, yes, we pay them more. But I also think they bring more. And I'm not saying that to demean what the others, you learn, experience is invaluable and, and you can't replace experience. And these tenured teachers, in my view, that's what's made our district as strong as it is because we have teachers that have been 28, 30. You know, they've been their whole lives teaching in this city with these same families and, and they bring, they bring love and compassion. They bring emotional healing when they can, when they actually can. Have the exposure to the kids to give it to them. I mean, I, I, so we, we could lose some of that. And going to Mrs. Odin's point, having fewer children in the classroom would certainly not be the worst thing that could happen to our classrooms because. They're in private school and I can tell you, they have 10, 12 in their classrooms. And the difference in, in individualized attention that you can give when you have a small classroom as opposed to having 20 and 25 and 27. Is just, just humongous. It, it, you cannot, and then in the pandemic, having them torn between so many different learning curves and. To be honest with you, it's been a, I think it's been a very rough year for our teachers. I couldn't have agreed with you or Mrs. Odin more than I do. And I certainly. The good that could come, the good that has come, obviously, is that our technology is finally. Slowly improved. It's probably not where it should be even now, but at least it's, at least it's closer, much, much closer. And then this smaller classrooms, that could be another blessing if, if that turned out to be the case. I don't think it will be truthfully, but if it did turn out to be, it certainly would be a blessing. I'm talking too long. I see Sharon's hand. Sorry.
Yeah, sorry. I, I'm toggling between my phone and my computer because I didn't want to miss anything and look foolish like I normally do.
No, you don't at all, not at all.
So I have my chat covered up, but yes, Ms. Gilio was asking to speak.
A few things, and these are kind of observations on what has come up so far. First of all, in our planning for next school year. I believe, and I don't think I'm alone in this, that we were planning on everyone returning fully to school at the beginning of the school year. The, um, the vaccinations that having, other having, that are happening right now are making that more possible. I don't think that we ever planned on anything other than a full return to school in September. Whether or not we're going to have 860 students come back, it remains unseen, but from everyone I've heard from. Children cannot wait to get back into their schools and be with their teachers and their friends. Families cannot wait to get back to their normal daily routine. I would suspect that that's the majority of the people who have had to make other arrangements this year. And I, I do have to say that, that. Had we started school in August when we were scheduled to, I am sorry, but I believe that we would have lost many lives and that we acted. In the best interests of our staff and our children in the city. So I am not taking blame for this situation. We just have to deal with COVID. I think we need to have all hands on deck for next year. Because the children are going to need more when they come back to us because they haven't gotten all of that this year. And I applaud our staff for all the hard work they've put in this year. Thank you.
And on a, on a plus side, because I, I'm always a silver lining type of person, but you know, of course, we miss those students who are no longer enrolled with us, but. If we see dramatic increases in social emotional growth with students with smaller classrooms, I mean, we're going to be walking into. A challenging time when the students come back and it might, it might be a good thing to have less students in the classroom and we can focus on, on their needs. Are we also possibly thinking about? And this is pie in the sky because I know there are some kids who are thriving in the remote. Are we going to be able to? Have that option present to students? No? With Dr. McKinney?
I saw Mrs. Raymond's hand up. I don't want to jump the line if that's okay.
Oh, that's kind of your Dr. McKinney. I was just wondering if that's something that's even been priced out because I saw ConVow presented that to their. Budget committee and it was like $700,000 for them to do it and they're slightly smaller than we are. So.
Much, yeah.
Yeah, I'm curious about if that's even been looked at cost-wise because it sounds very expensive.
So I just wanted to say, you know, after an atypical year, this is an atypical budget cycle because we have our operating budget and we do have. The emergency and secondary relief fund, two years of funds that help us get through the short and long-term impacts of COVID. So addressing the learning challenges with kids, doing things to address the air quality of buildings, expanding parking lots, construction. To Mrs. Odin's point, things around mental health. All of those things can be put into the budget and help and support kids. So. Returning to the fall, Ms. Bishop asked about staffing, you know, we're still at the same place we were before around 20 retirements or more. The question is, with this increased demand across the country for educators, will there be a number of people out there that can help fill these positions of before and after school tutoring? Saturday supports, mental health supports and/or, you know, finding the remote option that works for some kids. So we do have the funding. We've had some preliminary conversations around it. We are looking at starting possibly something small that works for kids. But I think we're trying to look at all our options and responding to COVID. So, you know, this budget process is kind of fluid because not only are the districts. Getting funding relief, so the cities and towns. So in our conversations with the mayor, he understands that some relief is coming to him as well as the state. So I think over the next probably two to three months, a lot could transpire. But we're fortunate that we have resources that we can put things in place at the district and school level to help and support our kids.
Excellent. Did anybody else have any comments or questions? I am not seeing any. Ms. Johnson, Ms. Odin, I can't see you. I'm just double checking in with you.
I'm good, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Odin?
I'm set, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And I see Ms. Raymond.
All right, I, I wondered if I could request that we have a non-public session before we adjourn for the evening tonight?
Yes.
So whenever you're ready, let me know and I'll make the motion.
So seeing no other questions or comments in regards to the. 22, 23 budget. I'd be looking for a motion to enter into non-public. Ms. Raymond?
I can do that. I'd like to make a motion that we have a non-public session. Under RSA 91832A and RSA 91832B.
I'll second that.
Thank you. And on the motion to enter into non-public, Ms. Bishop votes yes. Ms. Gilio?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Ms. Odin?
Yes.
Ms. Brown?
Yes.
Ms. Johnson?
Yes.
Mr. Carino is not here. Ms. Seem?
Yes.
And Ms. Timmons?
Yes.
Motion to go into non-public at, what time is it? At 6:59 has been approved.